Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to the, uh...
I'm here.
Are you sorry?
I'm live. Are you good? And?
Yep.
Tommy, go ahead.
Okay, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this, uh, Montgomery County Board of Elections meeting to order for a special board meeting on Friday, March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three. Would you please all rise and join me in the huddle, please, by the way.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to remind everybody that we use, uh, Robert's Rules of Order here, Montgomery County Board of Elections, and our, um, uh, officials will be our attorneys that will be deciding on that. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, have Judge Norman sit in as Secretary of Chair or Chairman Ryan. Okay, so it moves to the second. Huh? Second. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Judge Worf.
Okay, uh, I believe we're here today, um, on a request for reconsideration from candidates, uh, Esrati and Evans, and, um, the first question, gentlemen, uh, will we be reconsidering that at this point?
Yes, Your Honor, or, sorry, Judge, um, just to go through the process that we have done, uh, with regards to coming to here today. Uh, under Chapter fourteen, Section fourteen point oh four, uh, there is a paragraph called reconsideration, uh, of a not certified candidate. As we were at the last board meeting, there was discussion of that. I did receive on Monday afternoon, I think it was, uh, an email from Mr. Esrati requesting, uh, that, uh, he have reconsideration. I then, uh, went into that mode of talking to legal counsel as to the proper process to request or get notification to you as board members, so I didn't create a meeting in that process, uh, was given the authority, uh, to then, uh, ask you guys to set the date and time. Uh, you guys then were able to get back to me on Wednesday with the date and time of today's date. I then notified, we sent out a notification to all of those that we would have the, this special board meeting at eight-thirty. I individually also contacted Mr. Esrati to inform him approximately eight-fifteen on Thursday morning, so it was more than twenty-four hours in advance. I then made that request to him, uh, notified him a little bit about the potential procedure. We have a limited time, two hours, roughly everybody would get a half hour, uh, but that would still be up to the board. Um, I also then at that time made a, a call to Ms. Love, um, and because she had previously indicated, uh, while we were at the last meeting, that she wanted reconsideration, but kind of, it kind of would have carried out that she wanted to look at the, at the forms and get her stuff in order. I then notified her that we would be having this meeting, asked for her to be present. I want to give her the same set of opportunities. She said some additional questions, which I basically kind of like apologized for her. I really was gonna, it's not my role to answer that question, that would be up to the board. Um, so I'll let her ask those questions when, when it's at her time. Uh, but I did indicate that we would kind of, Mr. Esrati would go first, I could resp- uh, I as the board respond, and then the board, or, sorry, the board would make a decision with regards to Mr. Esrati's reconsideration, um, and then, um, we would, uh, work with Ms. Love at that point. Uh, so at this time, the first thing that's gotta happen pursuant to, uh, the EOM, uh, is that, uh, with Mr. Esrati's case, he made the request, uh, there needs to be a decision by the board as to whether or not we would like to reconsider, Mr., based on his request, would you like to reconsider your information regarding his request?
Are all the decisions made on motion? Or second, or are we, would this be directed? Uh, I would, based upon the reputations of Director Resebat, uh, as, as all parts of our, um, move to consider reconsider the requests for him, if not certified, to the May two, twenty-twenty-three primary slash special election.
Do you agree?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
So we will proceed with the reconsideration as Mr. Resebat briefly described. Uh, Mr. Esrati, uh, you would be...
Madam Chair, one, one more thing to, so I can go through this.
Yeah.
Uh, since you guys have now, uh, indicated that, uh, there is going to be reconsideration, which I did inform both, uh, individuals that are here today, that they would then be, if that was voted yes, they would have the time today to make the presentation. Based on anticipation of that, um, in reading, uh, under Chapter two of the EOM, um, and pursuant to, uh, Scott v. Franklin, County of Board of Elections, one thirty-nine, Ohio State, three D, one seventy-one, two thousand and fourteen, based on that court case, you guys are now acting as a quasi judicial, in a quasi judicial capacity, uh, which requires a certain set of due process. There are things that, uh, I have to do. Um, one, I have to inform the county prosecutor, which we did, they are present. We did properly select a ti- a time, a reasonable time and place for this hearing. We did provide notice, uh, to each of the parties, um, as to the special hearing that would be, uh, in, in place. There was discussion, I had to have direct discussion with the prosecutor's office yesterday about a court reporter, um, although it does indicate that there, that there needs to be a court reporter. Uh, we are double taking this. I did confirm with them that they, uh, at that late hour of one-thirty yesterday, when I was getting the, the notice, uh, from them about trying to get all this in arranged, I did not, uh, make an attempt to have a court reporter here, was unable to secure that, but was assured, uh, that we could proceed, uh, because we have the double recordings going on, noting as well as Mr. Esrati is recording it, um, but that, um, if asked upon, we would be responsible to provide, to get a re- a transcript, uh, through a court reporter, and that, of course, as many of you know, that, that's how it's done in court systems, so we're following that. You are required to place anybody who has to provide any testimony under oath, uh, and that oath will be either administered by one of you or the prosecutor's office. Uh, we have copy, we have the ability to make copies if there's any additional evidence that has not been already presented to, uh, uh, me at the beginning, because I did request that if either of them were gonna make presentations, that they provide me some kind of documentation so I could tell the copy's ready, but we do have a copier available. Uh, we will make all copies, uh, provided, either to both, uh, sides or all sides. At this time, the board is complying with the American, uh, with Disabilities Act. You are required to, uh, only take, uh, information that is presented to you, uh, today, as well as, and retain your own information against, with regards to our registration system, uh, in effect, uh, so this is over six. Uh, you're required to make a, a determination based on the signatures, uh, if you're going to indicate that they're valid, and based on the number, uh, those that are valid, uh, just add now qualified, uh, either Mr. Esrati or Ms. Love, on their petition to be placed on the May second, twenty-twenty-three, uh, app, in the City of Dayton Commission for us. I think that's it from my part of the procedural, uh, things that we have, we're complying with everything within the Secretary of State and within the laws of the state of Ohio, as well as the City of Dayton.
Okay, just a couple of things before we start. Number one, you mentioned the recording, it does say a court reporter. We do have two, um, two recordings being made, as you sort of alluded to, the complete score, as Montgomery County has gone away from court reporters, they have judicial assistants who write equipment, much like the equipment's getting right here, and there are companies that the court works with who take those, uh, recordings and transcribe them, so if this needs to be transcribed at some point, I think getting in touch with the court administrator would give you the people who are used to transcribing this type of proceeding. Number one.
Yes.
Uh, number two, Mr. Barrington, would you please, uh, one of these appropriate swearing witnesses?
Yes.
Now, as far as the procedure, we'll start with Mr. Esrati and then, and then Ms. Love, um, since he brought up the first petition. Uh, as you mentioned, each side will have one gift hour. Uh, Ms. Alfred Barclay, can you keep time?
Yes.
I want this to be very precise, thirty minutes each. If either of you wish to save any time to respond to what the Board of Elections says, um, let us know, but if you use the whole thirty minutes, you're done. If you use twenty, twenty-five, ten, whatever you want to do, that's up to you, okay? Um, any questions, Mr. Esrati?
No.
Ms. Love, I'll ask you when we come to you, or should I have some questions there for you to start? Uh, would you please stand and be sworn?
Sir, do you swear or are you contesting, or you give the whole truth and nothing about the truth, or something like that?
I do.
With that, Mr. Esrati, will you proceed?
I'd like to reserve five minutes, just in case. And I'd also like to state that, number one, I appreciate you taking time out of your busy days to come in here and do this, because this is an extra, an added responsibility. I'd also like to briefly touch on something that was said at the end of the last meeting, and I bear no ill will to Mr. Resebat or any of the staff at the Board of Elections. I do have severe problems when sunshine laws aren't followed. I do have a real problem with public transparency, and I might get angry, but it's not usually that I swear at somebody, and I don't think I did. But, moving forward, you have been put in a very, very difficult position, an unhealthily one, one that's probably not bringing you a whole lot of joy. You came here to be part of a Board of Elections, to conduct elections, to find out what the people in our community want for leadership. Now, seven people filed, that's a lot of people. That says to me that there's a whole lot of people not too happy with the way things have been going, because it is a major effort to undertake, to get five hundred signatures in the dead of winter, after dark, from voters. Some of us have a lot of experience at this. Two of the people have successfully completed this many times, and I have to ask you, and this is a very real question, and it, it comes from, first off, I gotta say, I mean, we have two more petitions and two attorneys. You are all in professions that nobody wants to come and see you, okay? This is not, you took, chose professions that are, are not that easy to deal with. You deal with people either dying or in court, which is never a fun place to be. So here you are, being asked to rule on these petitions, which we have known for decades are not very successful at doing what they're supposed to do. In fact, a long time ago, in twenty thirteen, I was so fed up, I, who happened to be a graphic designer, took the time to redesign a petition to stop having so many failures, because this failure thing is really gotten out of hand. And if you will note at the top, it's very clear what office you're running for, how many signatures are required tonight, I went to the standard that every other race has, a fifty instead of the five hundred, but your name, who lives at the address and date, would like to be a candidate for the office checked above, the general election, very clear, will be held on this date. However, if more than blank candidates turn in petitions to run, there will be a primary on date, just like no more than blank, two candidates for each open seat, it's very clear. You are allowed to sign up to one petition for mayor, no more than the number of open seats in the commission race, in this case, number two. You must, to the best of your knowledge, be a registered voter in the city of Dayton, your signature will, will be compared to the one on file with the Board of Elections. Now, very clearly note that I have name, please print, and then a signature, and notice that the signature is in script and the printing is in print. I have address, I have date of signing, and if you flip the thing over, this was twenty-eleven, actually, that I did this, you know, it's got the standard thing for who is the circulator, it's got all the same information, but it is very clear, it is very clear that you can't sign more than two petitions for mayor, for, for, um, one for mayor and two for commission. That is not the case of the petitions that the city continues to use, and this is part of what has caused the problem. Now, at the last meeting, um, there was a young man from the Secretary of State's office, and he told me that they had had similar problems in Cincinnati, which has the same five hundred standard, and at one time, they had all nine commissioners running at once. Now, there's, charter is very different, because this is both, both of these cities are doing this by home rule, and two of you are lawyers, and I, I know you understand that, I'm pretty sure Mr. Ruzan understands home rule versus the state, but the state has petitions that are very clear, like the one I did, and then the cities have tried to do this on their own. The city of Cincinnati charter has been revised multiple times, and I have a copy of it for you to look at if you want, and has all kinds of things specifically spelled out, including that on the petition, it very clearly says, you are not supposed to sign more than this number of petitions. So voters, when, when you go to knock on their door after dark, while they're eating dinner, when it's freezing cold out, don't have to think too hard, because, you know, unlike some of us in this room who are sort of political animals, this is not their thing. Their thing is watching Monday Night Football or something else. So, in my own neighborhood, on Facebook, there was a post on the private Facebook group, which had twenty-eight comments, and it's a picture of me with a, from a ring doorbell, and says, "Anyone recognize this guy? It's eight fifty, fifteen. What are you doing?" And somebody responded who was sort of supportive of this. If it was July, it would still be daylight, so eight fifteen is generally considered a late time for calls or visitation. I'm not meaning this as a criticism toward the OP, the original poster. It's great that we have a forum like this to ask such questions. This is a general reminder that since we enjoy living in an active community, we should be gracious towards our neighbor, we're actually being active in the neighborhood, in the community, and then he's got an asterisk, of course. I say this as someone who disagrees with almost all of Esrati's political views, but this was early on, this was on January sixth, and I started collecting signatures on January first. Voters do not like to be interrupted at home, but over five hundred of them, in my case, signed a petition because they wanted a choice on the ballot. They wanted to be the, have a choice to decide who was their best choice, and quite frankly, if you want to be realistic here, there is a better way of doing this than having a primary, it's called ranked choice voting, where you put all the people on the ballot, and so we can do this for a ballot in November, where people can campaign and do all this stuff during the summer months, when it's sunny and people are out and not scared to open their door, because it's dark, et cetera, and we could have ranked choice voting and eliminate a, a primary where very few people vote. In fact, we've had people get elected with as few as nine thousand votes. We had six thousand eight hundred and fifty-two signatures turned in. That's more than double, that's half of what might actually be the winner's vote tally, because people ignore primaries. It's sad, because primaries are the first step to the general election. So, as a graphic designer, I realize that when nobody did better than a thirteen percent correct turn-in rate, we have a problem with the document, and that's why I redesigned this. But I was the best at thirteen percent, because, let's see here, um, Mr. Wertham, he was eighty-two percent correct, I was eighty-seven, Ms. Duncan was seventy-five percent, Mr. Joseph and Mr. Shaw, who are the incumbents, who have had the ability to change the charter multiple times and resolve this, they came in seventy-four percent correct, uh, Mr. Beddinger came in with sixty-one percent, and Ms. Love fifty percent. That's a real problem. If we had elections and you guys could only account for, we'll just say eighty-seven percent of the votes properly, you'd be run out of office, you wouldn't be doing your jobs, and rightfully so. In fact, graphic design has made a difference in our voting as recently as two thousand, when you might remember the butterfly ballots in Florida, where bad graphic design had a whole bunch of old people voting for somebody that they probably didn't think they were voting for. This is serious stuff. This kind of failure rate is an indication for you, who are supposed to be running elections with integrity and honesty, and with beyond, being beyond reproach, to tell the city of Dayton, "Hey, look, your petition sucks. Your petition isn't doing what it's supposed to do, even if your best, your incumbent candidates are turning in twelve hundred signatures to get five hundred. Why is that?" In, in Cincinnati, you're only allowed to turn in a thousand, by the way. So, the task of fixing some of these signatures is pretty simple, it's just a matter of they didn't sign their name, or it's not quite legible, and you go out with an affidavit, I've done this before, and I had some of those that I corrected. There are two people I couldn't get a hold of, just couldn't get a hold of. But this other thing is the dupe policy, and the dupe policy gets a little hairy. The Cincinnati charter actually spells out the policy, it's in their charter. The city of Dayton doesn't say anything about it. The city of Dayton is basically refused to address this while the Cincinnati charter's changed it over and over and over. So, there's a question. Is the, did I have too many people have dupes? And the other question is, is it really okay for another candidate to collect signatures and turn them in before my signature? And disqualify a signature I got from a voter? And that question, according to the Secretary of State, which is not the final answer on this, it can be up to the courts, and you are in a semi-judicial system, but I gotta go right to what the Dayton Charter prescribes to be on this petition, and I must remind you that signatures without a date, they're a no-go. That is an absolute, if the signature does not have a date, it's out of there. Am I correct? No, nobody's gonna answer.
This is your time to press a response.
So, it says, "We individually certify that we have signed no other mayor's petition, no petition for commission, a greater number than the number of commissioners to be chosen at the next general, at the next blank municipal election." So the voters may, uh, promise to me that they've done that right by signing my petition. If somebody comes along afterwards and then turns their petition in before me, you just turn that voter, if you're disqualifying their earlier signature, into a person guilty of a felony of the fifth degree, because they falsely stated that they have only signed the number of petitions. And to go back at this point and sit there and try to fix these things, which shouldn't need to be fixed in the first place, because the real question is, did the, the candidate go out and talk to five hundred voters, and did five hundred voters say, "Yes, I want you on the ballot," and by these notarized affidavits that I've gone out and collected from the people, and I think there's twenty-two or twenty-four of them, at least twenty-two, these people unanimously said, "Yes, that was my signature, here it is corrected," and most of them says, I, they signed it believing that any candidate should get on the ballot with, who meets the qualifications. They said things like, um, that the form has a signature approval rate, over thirteen percent seems problematic to me. You should have copies of these, these are the originals, I don't know if I need to give them the originals, as, no, we have copies. Okay, I mean, they are notarized and they are signed, so I made that effort, and I've got the correcting petitions, but there's still the question of why, since this process is not an election, this is a process of certification by a Board of Elections who's supposed to hold elections so voters could choose who they want, why verify signatures past the number required? Why go past five hundred? Once you've got five hundred good ones, they used to stop, that used to be the policy, I know, because I've been running since nineteen ninety-three. In the very first two times, I turned in five hundred and three and five hundred and six petitions, and I got on the ballot, and I wasn't going by voter registration lists or anything else. So this has been refined and focused down in a process to winnow the field. The real question is, should they continue past five hundred, once you get to five hundred? And then you also have to question, if the charter says that these people said that on that date, they hadn't signed more than two, are you going to turn voters into criminals by signing three or four? I do not believe the way to encourage democracy is to turn voters into criminals. In fact, I went in the service to protect your right to vote, and I don't think that throwing you in prison for what is an F-two felony gets you, or an F-five felony gets you, it gets you, uh, uh, I don't know, the judge could probably, both judges could tell me what an F-five is, but it, it's not a, a pretty penalty. So, in O R C thirty-five, one, three, dot, oh, five, it says, and this is in the O R C, this is not a directive from the Secretary of State, it says, "The Board of Elections may discontinue verifying signatures when the number of verified signatures equals the minimum required number of qualified signatures." You chose not to. Instead of trying to get people on the ballot, you were actively working to stop people from getting on the ballot, and I am going to say that that is not the job of the Board of Elections, that you are not trying to openly hold fair and open elections where the people decide who gets on the ballot, who they choose. You guys are the, the small hurdle, the big hurdle is getting a majority of people in the city to say they want David Esrati over Chris Joseph and Matt Shaw, or any of the other people, and I welcome that opportunity to put it in their hands, and I believe so should you. The Dayton City Commission must fix this petition, and again, I have the two, I have the Cincinnati, and I have the Dayton, they're both eight pages, because one is formatted properly for print and one is not, but the Dayton one is much thinner, and if you review those, you will see that they've updated the Cincinnati one often. Lastly, and, this is a question that if you sat there and analyzed, and I didn't have very much time to analyze, because I only got the other petitions a day or two ago to look at, even though I had requested them weeks ago. If we go by date of signature instead of date of turn-in, there is a possibility that one of the candidates could be knocked off the petitions, because he came into my neighborhood at the last minute and got some signatures from people who'd signed almost three months before. I personally would be disgusted if that's what happens. I don't think it's your job to take people back off the ballot by any means. Let the voters do it, and tell the city, revise your petitions, because we're not gonna sit here in the middle of this anymore. So, with that, I would like to also supply some of the, you guys all should have this, but some sections of law that are appropriate, um, from the O R C, and I highlighted some of it in there, but there's, you're, you're supposed to be pretty well versed in this by now and everything else, but the reality is, you are not supposed to invalidate petitions on the basis that the petition form does not satisfy the requirements of law, if the petition is otherwise valid. Requirements of law, it's a question of what the, what the city, Dayton city charter has, it doesn't have anything about date of turn-in, it doesn't have any of the details on how to deal with these things, it is negligent, and you can't just turn the Cincinnati's charter, if anything, you have to turn, turn to the state. I will also s- I will also say that the job of checking signatures is incredibly difficult, it's very hard to read these things, because they're signed on a clipboard in the middle of the freezing cold while people have a baby balanced on one arm and everything else. So, the signatures might not match what you have on your records. But going out and asking these people to validate, they all willingly validated, and it's been notarized. So, these are legal affidavits, and they're all saying, put me on the ballot. It is not a question of if I am short signatures, it's a question of what signatures do you wanna count, and how do you wanna count them, because the law is unclear. And if this was a petition for statewide issues, they always let people quickly go out and get additional signatures if they are short. This is one issue I forgot to mention. There is no way of me, as a candidate, knowing anything about duplicates, by the way. The only way you can tell about duplicates, other than the sworn statement when they sign it, which of course, we don't put them under oath, or get, ask them for I D. and a notary on their original petitions, we do that on the other one, on the follow-up thing that I turned in. But we have no way of checking these. Say, the Board of Elections said, you can check your signatures. Well, I can check my signatures, and I could go get more, and I go get more, but I got ten percent more, which is more than enough for something that, when you're going by the Board of Elections petitions, you should be fine, by the Board of Elections' swap list of registered voters. So, here's the question. The petition. I just lost my train of, I was working up to it. God, that sucks getting old. Oh, when we go out and get a lot, large-scale petition, they allow you to go out, back out and get more to fix this. This process does not allow that. It would take me no time to get eighteen additional signatures, it would take Ms. Love no time to get another forty-one at this point. But this capping it off and saying, no, because you have duplicates, which we have no way of telling we have or don't have, because that's not our fault, that's the fault of the voters or the petition. We are not given that remedy, so we have to go through the harder remedy, which I've done with the notarized affidavits. And I think because of that, you have to accept them, you have to place me on the ballot, you cannot remove Mr. Benninger, who's already been approved, let the voters do it, and save yourself the problems, and the safe going to the Supreme Court and going through all these extra hoops, because we've already gone two weeks into a sixty-day cycle, and we don't have resolution on this. And I don't care how many signatures Ms. Love is short, I know she could get forty-one more that are good, and she would do it with a voter registration list, and she could do it by this end of this business today. And I want her on the ballot as well. Thank you very much.
Michelle Brubaker, how much time was used?
Twenty-three minutes.
Okay, so you'll have seven more when you're done.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Mr. Roosevelt?
Yes. Members of the Board, we have a process that we follow here at the Board of Elections with regards to the city of Dayton petitions. That, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Yes.
You swear a firm testimony about to give the truth to all three of us, but to yourself, you got it.
I do. Sir. Thank you. Starting over, yes, in here at the Montgomery County Board of Elections, that we do have a process. That process is controlled by the city of Dayton Charter, and the requirements of the city of Dayton that they impose on us when we ask opinions, and those opinions, we have a folder of all those opinions, we go through them to make sure that we're following through. But we also have a generic process in the sense of, that we apply to all petitions that come before us. And basically, you know, when you come down to it, we follow that same process that we do with the city of Dayton and with the city of Dayton rules, and we did that in this particular case with the Dayton city commissioners. Basically, the moment that a candidate turns in their petition, we accept it and we timestamp it, and that timestamp is very important, because as the individuals come in, that's how we determine who came in first, and then we look at each of those, that part petitions of that candidate, put them in the system, evaluate each and every one of those signatures, then we move to the second individual by timestamp of who filed, and do that same process. So, because of that timestamp, it becomes critical, especially, and it becomes critical, not only in this particular thing, in any races that have a limit as to whether or not you can only sign a certain number of petitions. After we receive those, there is an initial, what we call an initial first check, and an initial first check means that the clerks take the petition, and in taking that petition, they then evaluate each and every one of those signatures for those that can be accepted, those that cannot be accepted. After that first pass of checks, it then goes to a second review, that second review or second check, it's done by, you know, could be done by a different party, that did the first part petition will be, won't be the same person, it's done by a different person, and of course, that may be a different party as they flip off the part petitions, to make sure that we're being fair and going through. At that point, if the individual candidate does not have enough signatures, that next review, a third review, gets elevated to the admin level. And this is where our admin team begins to look at that in pairs, by parties in pairs, and they initially start looking at the signatures that were indicated to be invalid, and going through a series of steps to kind of evaluate if they can make them valid. Our goal here at the Board of Elections is to try and find as many valid signatures as we can to place as many candidates on the ballot as within the prescribed rules of the Board of Elections, as in prescribed rules of the Secretary of State, and of course, the state laws, but in this particular case, within the prescribed rules of the Dayton City Charter. As they look at these signatures, and I'll give you a quick example of, at the admin level, and all levels could do this, and some of them do, that's why they become valid, you try and kind of to correct them and make them valid. But if a signature has been said not genuine, because they printed it or signed it differently, what happens is, you can go back and look at all of the signatures that they have on certain documents that they presented, their original registration, or any new registration, change of address, every time they have a signature, you can follow through, and many of our staff goes through every one of those to make sure, if they can say, oh, yeah, wait a minute, no, three, three voter registration update forms that they sent in, they did print, so we'll count it, because it seems that it matches up, that that person had previously printed their D M R. And so, that happens at the admin level. If the individual candidate does not have a enough signatures at that point, it comes to a fourth check at the executive level, and this is where, in this particular case, I, along with Avril, Guy, Abner, and Bill Hibner, then began a series of additional checks on these particular petitions, and which becomes much more robust, and continued to evaluate those that are not valid, that's what we're looking at, to try and get them up. We're not going back, and this is a real important point, we don't go back and try and invalidate valid signatures. This is trying to move forward, to move the candidate forward. This process, and in particular with the city of Dayton, as I said, when we do the timestamp, this process has been in place for decades. We have followed, and we're following the same Charter requirements. In the particular, in this particular case, the city of Dayton does not have a requirement for a date on their petition, and that is not in the Charter. We use the timestamp and the date stamp as the date of the filing for all of the signatures on that particular petition, as compared, as compared to other petitions, especially when there's that limit of requirement of not signing more than X number of petitions. Additionally, this is again, the most logical process as to not contradict the Dayton Charter, and additionally, so that we don't add additional burdens or restrictions on the candidate or the voter as that have not been prescribed, and so we continue to follow them. It's all been provided, a memorandum that was provided to me and the board again, from the city of Dayton, it's March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, it was directed towards me, it is the opinion from the city of Dayton on their commission, petitions concerning dates and signing of lack orders. I'll indicate that, again, asked for an updated opinion, whether the signature date is necessary. The city responded, not only in this letter, but attached an additional letter from nine, March nineteen ninety-nine, that Charter does not require the date of the signing, the relevant Charter section has not changed, or has the law department's opinion changed on this matter. I then made a further request of the timestamp that we used, and they indicated they're aware of that process, and that practice is using the date stamp of the filing date of the petition with the Board of Elections as a corollary factor in determining if petitions contain duplicate signatures that are excluded, because the signature date does not require, this is, process is logical, and does not contradict the Dayton Charter. And we will submit that to you, but that is the reason and the process that we continue to use. I will go through just briefly each, and I'm just gonna variety provided. Initially, the front page is page, it says one through four, of what we did, so that I could make reference to each of them. We have a red number in the bottom right-hand corner, is notice to us as to his request for reconsideration. So, I was gonna address each and every one of those, since he had presented that as a document for you to consider. I will go through on page one, the first part, where it says, petition line three, it's the number one, petition line three, Judith, and it's H U A C U J A, it says four hundred Hickory. It is challenging that, and this is part of his affidavits, voter affidavit, if you look at page five of that packet, where he went out and got the notarized signature from Judith. Now, in that particular case, in the petitions itself, which we have here, which were sent to Mr. Israidi, it was, that petition or that signature, that was already counted as valid in our system, so it does not change his count. And you can see that, I'll go through one of the forms if you, if you wish, but number two, David, and it's petition nine, petition nine, line nineteen, David Kuhn, four hundred Hickory, it was marked as invalid on our, because the signature did not match the signatures that were, all, any of our, all the signatures that have been provided to the Board of Elections at the time. However, Mr. Israidi has now indicated and provided an affidavit, which we would now count as valid. So, he is, that is a plus one for him. Petition number, or it says number three, petition fourteen, line nineteen, which is Frank Straight, it was marked invalid on our list, because the signature did not match any of his signatures, going through all of those steps that we do, to try and make sure that they're trying to validate, validate the signature. In doing so, he has now provided, Mr. Israidi has provided a affidavit from that voter, and thus, it becomes valid. So, now he's gaining as a plus two to change his total number. He then went on to, if you go down two paragraphs on page one, he then talks about Mrs. Irons, which says petition ten, line thirty-four, Miss Irons, two forty-nine Park, there is indicated that he has no affidavit, thus that is not genuine signature, and will continue to be listed as invalid, as he's provided no information to contradict that. Now, he refers to Michael, in the very next paragraph, petition eleven, he refers to line fifteen, that belongs to John, Michael John Regnider, R E G N I E R, who lives at three-two-two Park, and gives some additional information. In the process of looking at his petition, in the overall. Yeah, we already have that, and I don't know, and there is an issue, because it was about changing addresses, and I'll show you what happened in that particular case. We have it as marked as valid, and what Mr. Israidi was indicating, that in that particular case, he was arguing that we had marked it as not genuine, in that particular case, it actually is, originally was, in the first series of checks, was marked as N G, not genuine, however, on the second check, there is a green line through there, not genuine, and a check mark, right? And so, thus, it became valid, it's valid in our system, it doesn't change his count at all, and you can do that, because, I can show you from the original forms, just to give you an explanation of how I'm doing this. And we'll go to petition eleven. Petition eleven, what it has, this is the original, and what it has, and we sent colored copies to Mr. Israidi, so he could understand this, and I explained to him several times on the phone, there's a number that's in red, that is the number of the part petition, that's how we know what it is, okay? You see some additional numbers that are in, with a circle around it and initial, one happens to be in red, one happens to be in green, and then there's one over here in black, okay? And then, as you can see going down the lines itself, there are check marks, and then there's either N R for not registered, there's one that says a dupe here, there's one, and we get to line fifteen, and you can clearly see it's marked as, in red, as N R, and then there's a dash, and there's a check mark, which means now it's valid. And so, you can see in the red numbers, it was originally number thirty-four on the count, okay? However, on the second check, that was done by a team, because they saw that change, that they said he was, no, he was valid, he is now, the number goes up one, okay? Now, ultimately, there is a loss of numbers. These black numbers in the top left-hand corners, I explained to Mr. Israidi a number of times, are my mark on it, as to the final count after the fourth review, as to the number that we are gonna use. If you add up all of those that are in the petitions that he has filed, they will add up to the number four eighty-two, this is what I believe is the correct on here. Now, in this thing, it says, well, it went up to thirty-five, right? But then it dropped down to thirty-four. How did that happen? Well, we determined that signer number twenty-five out here was a dupe, and so that's why I took it down. We counted each one of these, the front and back, there are thirty-four valid signatures. That is how the process works.
There's a check mark on it.
If we go to petition number thirteen, and this is with Kelly. Petition thirteen, and this, I'm sorry, go to page two of Mr. Israidi's complaint or request for reconsideration, the second paragraph, says petition thirteen, line twenty-one, and it's Kelly Deal, it's been both checked and a dupe, and that is correct, and that was the same thing that I think he was just reiterating to, that that is my, there's a black mark on it, which marks, there's a red check mark, but it isn't considered to be a dupe pursuant to our system, okay? Which again, then, you look at, it's number thirteen, circle is thirty-seven, but if you take one off, it becomes twenty-six. So, that is where that ends up happening. So, that has already been marked as a dupe.
What petition number was that?
Thirteen.
Thirteen?
It makes, additionally, the, as kind of the same set of paragraph, with a new line, talks about Robert Gunn. Robert Gunn, in this particular case, has signed it, not only did he sign it twice for Mr. Israidi, he did sign it for Marcus Benninger and Ms. Love. Mr. Israidi, in this particular case, it actually ultimately becomes... Mr. Israidi, in this particular case, it actually ultimately becomes, I believe he is, maybe it is double on line 18 or petition 18. Yeah, Mr. Gunn has, on petition 13, line 15, is declared a dupe because it was previously submitted under Marcus Benninger and Ms. Love in the prior filings that they did before Mr. Israidi, so it would be considered a dupe. And he did sign it a second time for Mr. Israidi on page 18, line five, noting that it was at a different address. One, his registered address is 327 Albert, Alberta Street. He did sign it as, I believe it was like 1100 on a different address. It would have been 1100.
West Third.
West Third Street, so, but if you compare the signatures, they're identical signatures, so we believe it was the same person, but signing at two different addresses, that would actually be considered a dupe, but it's a dupe within its own petitions. So it would not be counted at all, does not change his count. So, and then lastly, to go through the process, he then, in from line, from page two to page three, he lists 18 additional petitions and where his argument is about the date in the timeline. However, to just to note in your packet, he actually presents 19. In this list, he failed, if you look on page 16 of your, of his packet, we call it page 16, he forgot to add in Catherine Good to this line of things, so I just put it as number 19 because he's making the same argument on all of these. Please note that on line, on number, number 15 on page three, he has the wrong line number, and also on page, on number 18, he has the wrong line number, so we were looking at correcting those. This is his argument with regards to this and about the deadline. We use and follow through with the petition and we use the deadline of the timestamp that comes to our office. That deadline is set because we have no other mechanism in which to follow, because since the signature's, signature date is not required by the city of Dayton, we, this office for years has then used that timestamp or date stamp that we received as the time for each and every one of those signatures that have been turned to the office. We then use that as forward. So if you turn, you're the first one turning in, second, you review all those, the second one, they did theirs, third one may lose some because of the prior two, depending on the timeline. In this particular case, there were six other individuals filed before Mr. Israidi, each and every one of those. We have confirmed as dupes, we've provided that, he did ask, did take a while in which to get that, pull out that information from the system and how to do that. We act as an agent for the city of Dayton, in fact, sometimes we refer to as, the city contracts us to do these elections, to implement and run their elections, but we are required to follow their rules as previously indicated. They are a charter-run city and they have a set of rules. Our entire process, as we have gone through, is, I believe, the best logical process to go through and continue to complete and follow those that are set by the city of Dayton as prescribed. The city of Dayton endorses how we do this process. Many of the arguments that you've heard today are not directly as to how I presented it in talking about valid or invalid with these particular names, but they are on things that we as a board cannot decide or just choose. And so what we have done here as the Board of Elections, we strive to make sure that all possible candidates make the ballot within the restrictions set by law, or in this particular case, the city of Dayton Charter. It is our hope that all candidates make the ballot and so it is that the voter making the decision of who is selected to be the leaders of our community. We have done that, Mr. Israidi, even with his presentation of whether it was the verbal presentation, the documents he presented here today, and/or the form itself. He, as I go through each and every one of those, he still fails to become valid by 16 signatures. And so at this time, we again would recommend, based on everything that we have done at the board and following all the rules here at the board, following all the rules of the Secretary of State, and more importantly, following the instructions and the rules set by the city of Dayton Charter, would recommend that Mr. Israidi's petition not be, be accepted as valid and not be placed on the May 2nd, 2023 special option. Thank you.
How much time is that?
He has seven minutes and 51 seconds remaining.
Okay. All right, Mr. Israidi, if you'd like to respond, and before you do, just for clarification for your argument, it's my understanding what the Board of Elections is saying is that Mr. David Kuhn's, Mr. Frank Straight, Ms. Judith, H A.
Kiwaka.
Kiwaka, and Mr. Regnier are all valid and that does not change the numbers that are required. With those included, there's still a short of 16, is that correct?
Correct. Two of those were already as valid, adding the two new ones that he, Mr. Israidi has presented, the affidavit, he goes from being 18 short to being 16 short.
So those have been accepted, just so you understand that.
Great, I'm still short. I can't show proof right this minute, but I do know that in prior times, petitions have been rejected for ditto marks. Petitions have been rejected for not having the date properly filled out. Why do I know this? Because I have been for years being very careful about making sure that they fill those things out. Now, notice it doesn't have, it doesn't say anything about Warden Precinct, but that still appears on this petition. Why? Why are they wasting valuable space with ward petition, Warden Precinct, and date of signing when obviously we need room for printed name, signature, address, and room for them to make their marks? Because when I'm trying to sort through what they sent me, those signatures that I was checking were ones that said dupe or said NG, I couldn't see the marks, and they used some other marks that according to the Secretary of State are equal. Now, as Mr. Gunn, who signed twice for me, that was two different circulators. Now, how do two circulators end up with the same person? One hit him at work, one hit him at his home, one hit him, me, way early in the process. And now, if you're disqualifying Ms. Love's signatures, how can you disqualify mine as a dupe? Because her signatures don't count, she's not on the ballot, so that, that should be restored to me. But we're not questioning whether the date counts. Somehow, the language, the legal language that is on this petition, which the voters are presented with, is being ignored. It says that we individually certify, that we've signed no other mayor's petition, no petition for general commissioner and just greater than the number. This is what the voters said. And you're going to say, because somebody turned in a petition earlier and they happened to hit the same person. You know, we might get down to there's only 10,000 registered voters and if 10 candidates fill out 1,500 signatures each, nobody gets on the ballot because of dupes. This is just getting absolutely absurd. Because I can't tell what their marks mean, they can't tell what their marks mean, and we can't tell whose signatures are valid or invalid. And I just realized that one, 13, one of the dupes, Van Tillingham, I got her husband to sign. I would have got her to sign too, but I didn't realize she was a dupe and not counted. But the question is, are you going to accept what the voters said on these signed affidavits? Who believed that I should be on the ballot and they should be able to make the choice? Not the Board of Elections, none of you have been elected to any of these positions. Okay? You've been elected to judge, you've been elected to judge. Mayor McLean has been married, elected to lots of things, and she herself said this process is tedious and onerous. But when you try to get people to help you and volunteer, I gotta say one thing, it's different when you're an incumbent. Nobody ever turns, when the city commissioner shows at your door, very few people say some of the things that they will say to me. And this is something I really didn't want to get into, but I had a volunteer helping me early on. And she was all positive about this. She'd never done one of these before. She says, I mentioned, I was looking forward to helping you collect signatures to be on the ballot for the city of Dayton Commission. I believe any taxpaying citizen in good standing should be allowed to run if they wish and let the voters decide who they want. I do think 500 signatures is onerous, especially when the deadline is in March. January, February not normally conducive to walking door to door, but those are the rules. I set out with your instructions to simply state my purpose of collecting signatures for your name to be placed on the ballot, I rang the bell or knocked on every door on my list, registered voters, and indicated the results on my address list, NA, home, and signature, home, and no thank you. For the most part, everyone was kind, very kind and friendly, and I was enjoying the process. I'm not going to read this last part, I'm going to give it to you and let you read. And it's part of the reason I'm so sad about something that's happened on this board, that this board is done. This process is not easy. It's made more difficult when you have a rule that allows you to actually block signatures. None of these voters ever signed a petition thinking they were going to block somebody else from being on the ballot. Every one of these voters believed their signature was counting, just like they believed their votes count on election day, to put somebody on the ballot because they believe in the democratic process. And if you follow the rules the way they're being interpreted, where you're reading through 1,200 signatures and using some of those to block signatures as duplicates, and you're going through all this process, not to put people on the ballot, but to actually eliminate them and ignore the will of the voters as these affidavits stay, you're not doing what we expect you to do as an American. And that would bother me greatly. So I hope that you say to the city of Dayton, take a lesson from the city of Cincinnati, fix this process, fix your petitions, stop wasting time on Warden Precinct and date if they're not needed, make it sure it's very clear how many signatures you're allowed to sign and that the candidate has signed all this above, so they know what they're signing, not on the back, not on the front, not on a legal sheet even. Make it easy for this process to go and have room on the left side so they can make their marks clearly and there's no confusion, because it's very hard to calibrate what really happens here. And there is no process in place that we can check to see if somebody's telling us the truth when we go and get that signature. I can go by the registered list, which I have, I brought it here with me, you've got a scan of it on the back of what Ms. Dawkins wrote, but I've got a process that works where I only get registered voters and I stop as soon as I think I have enough because people don't like this process. And lastly, I will say again, if you can run for Congress with 50 signatures, who does the city commission think they are that they're worth requiring, worthy of requiring 500 as the bond? Dayton's a city a quarter the size of Cincinnati. Every other elected office in this county is a maximum of 50 signatures, except for the Dayton School Board, which has 300, but there you can solicit one petition, they can sign for three people at once. You'll notice that some of my petitions were circulated by Jordan Orville. I circulated petitions for him. Are we canceling each other out because of by turning date? Does that make any sense? Or does, is it respectful of the voter? Why is this process so difficult? And how do you explain that Ms. Love turned in over 900 signatures and still doesn't make it? And then some of those signatures are being counted against me. Again, we, we need to do better. I leave it in your able hands, thank you very much.
And with this time, we should discuss how we're going to proceed.
We're taking a five-minute.
Great, sure. We're gonna take a five-minute recess, not for discussion, just recess, correct?
Yes.
So just so we're known, we want to be open about this, we're gonna have a break for five minutes. There will be a discussion among the board members and.
Just to note to everybody that the media will be running on our systems.
Okay.
No, we've spent on, but shall we come back in session?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, thanks.
Sure.
Just to indicate for the record, these are the documents that were presented by Mr. Zrati. If you can, Captain Mark, you can accept it or number it up. Of course, you can review those as well as any documents that you submitted from the board side, the statement of the city of Dayton as an accepted. As well as, because it's in our system, you of course have the ability to review copy of the charter, the petition itself, and anything in the EOMF directives that you may wish. With that, I think all the documents have been submitted to the meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Over here in this last presentation.
No, we're gonna decide this one first and then we might continue. So, is that, we all have issued signatures in your meetings?
I did.
I did?
So.
Okay.
I do have questions.
Sure.
Not for us.
For them, first.
Yeah. I think that if you have questions, this is perfect case.
Actually, this first question's Mr. Resbeck. How do the candidates for the Dayton City Commission, when I refer to candidates, that's the one I was supposed to mean. How do they acquire petitions?
They can receive a petition from the city itself. Turn them offline, maybe work under our office.
Please. City of Dayton Commissioner and Mayor petition are valid while online?
Well, I don't live there, I don't... They can receive them from the city as their own prescribed sheet.
All right. What if you're holding out there is a copy of the petition, correct?
Correct, a copy of what we have provided before. It's a blank copy of the petition. The copy that says prescribed by the city of Dayton, Ohio, January 3rd, January 2003. And then there's a line for us about...
That was the one question I had regarding.
Okay. All right, so you have questions? Is there some?
Um, no.
Okay.
I may have some comments later on, it's up, but not right now. Thank you, I'm sure.
Okay.
I guess in the discussion that I would have is that I think our hands are pretty well tied here. There's no question, 500 signature in my mind is a ridiculous number, but it's not our vehicle. Our job here is to, to, this is what we're handed. And this, Mr. Zrati, I think this is awesome. I don't think there are any questions. As a board member, being on this board for many years, around here for many years, it's great. This is not, not the venue for that. Thank you for the background of Cincinnati, doesn't owe me any weight here. I don't care what Cincinnati does. I know what they ask us to do and how we have to execute our people. As far as I'm concerned, that our staff has definitely gone through these in a proper manner. You know, I have no question, the bipartisanship of our staff, they're doing an excellent job. I totally believe in what they do. You've done this so many times that you should know some of the outcomes that are going to take place and, you know, turn your petition in, you know, really late after all the other ones. Sorry, you just got, it's a lack of the draw here and so...
I totally agree with you.
I think that, you know, you just got captured under the rules and regulations of the city of Dayton and, I don't know, I'm needing to, I know, go accept this.
I would go too, that if you look at the petition, it clearly says, we individually certify that we signed no other mayor's petition, no petition for commission greater in number than the number of commissioners to be chosen. So it's pretty clear that duplicates are a problem and that they can't be counted. As far as felonies, one thing that we, the lawyers, know that one of the important aspects of finding someone guilty if something is intent. So I don't think that people who sign duplicates petitions should feel that they're going to be arrested for that issue or that issue would come up.
I would totally agree with you.
Also, I believe that 500 is a large number. That's the city of Dayton changed. The petition clearly states that duplicates are not permissible, that you can only sign for a number of people. And our process and our procedure, over the years of counting them as the petitions come in, has both been the process, has been the procedure, the unwritten policy. Our staff goes out of their way to make sure they can do what they can, to make sure that people are on the ballot. And based upon our process and the logic of it, that when the petition comes in, that is checked. At this point in time, there's no other way to do it. So I believe that reconsideration would be an appropriate consideration.
Are we allowed to check with the council? See if there are any that's also...
I do, I do. So I think, I agree with my fellow boardroom statements in that it's not our role to write the law. It's not our role to think what can do with the law should be. It's our role to do what the law is. In this case, it's the city of Dayton Charter. The city of Dayton Commission Assembly, which is a body, is the proper authority to do that, not judicial or quasi-judicial proceeding. That's how we need to, I take issue with the fact that Darvon Arstangres, those are disorders, as I said in the earlier meeting. I also take numbers with government agents or any agency operating with unwritten rules and policy practices regardless of how long they've been imposed. The practice having been in place for this long, it needs to be codified. If it's not codified, then it is subject to interpretation at any point. Additionally, having seen the, and heard the revised code of the city of Dayton Charter, doesn't prescribe a date at all in the charter. Does at that point force or stand a thinking in reviewing and accepting petitions and removing as duplicates those signatures based upon their data submission by the candidates. However, the city of Dayton has also prescribed their own form. And their own form as prescribed has a date line on there. Thereby calling into question whether or not that line is necessary. And at that point, if the date of signing, even though it's not on the charter, isn't the prescribed form by the agency and the entity that wrote its own charter and has the power and ability to amend it, they themselves call into question the date of signing and they themselves have outlined the date of signing. So had the city of Dayton Commissioners stood and done no more than the city of Dayton Charter requires, I do agree that our hands are absolutely bound and it is at that point only the submission of the petition package by the candidates that will control. But because the city of Dayton Commissioners, in the prescription of their form, went further and added that date of signing, at that point, they have called into question that they, as Mr. Zrati, as Ms. Love, and as any other candidate has to do, must be bound and held accountable by their own actions. I don't think don't submitting petitions at the very last minute, I think that is an issue. There's a problem. And I would look at this and think, I disagree with Mr. Zrati's position that the acceptance of further commission, further elected signatures would create a felony. Or at least that elected takes it as a felony because it's somebody else's act that, it's legally a person, you cannot do that. However, the signing, when the individual elector sets that signs petition number three after signing petition number two, the date of signing would be their own action, which showed evidence of their own intent. While I disagree that it is, what the city of Dayton has held itself to, bound itself and ourselves, it's going in their own prescribed form. And so the question would then become whether or not, I think it's 18 short.
Correct.
Someone can press.
Sixteen.
Sixteen short. Sixteen short of the duplicates based upon the date of signing. If Mr. Zrati over the edge on that, so 500 requirement, if the answer is yes, I don't see how we can impose something else than what has been written and clearly defined in their charter. So I would, I would dare to vote that it should be reconsidered if those additions...
Do I hear a motion either to reconsider or not reconsider Mr. Israti's?
Well, actually, the question is whether or not you would accept the current signatures, the current presentation of the signatures as being 16 short and thus not valid to be placed on the ballot, May 2nd, 2023, or that you would accept it as valid?
I don't think the question would be that clearly moved.
I think, I think we serve as that's right. We had agreed to consider reconsider.
We already considered, we're already in reconsideration.
So, do I hear a motion to either accept or not accept Mr. Israti's petitions?
I'll ask a clarifying question before I can further than that. And I'll ask the same question to both, although Mr. Zrati, you may want to defer to Mr. Resbeck's answer on this. Mr. Resbeck, would the acceptance of the duplicates signatures on Mr. Zrati's forms, do we know if they were signed before or after the ones that they were, I guess, the duplicates of?
There was a mixture of those that were signed before and after. And likewise, I'm referring to, I know you, in your statement indicated that because they prescribed on this form that they have a date of signing, there's also word and precinct. Those were originally put on simply because for when we were doing this manually so that we could find the signature in that. So it had nothing to do with whether it was valid or not, it was a process in which to do it. So just because something's placed on the form doesn't place the burden. The total regard for the charter itself, the rules come within the charter. They don't come in some prescribed form, whether you put that in. Additionally, this, the law director, again, the city has been quite clear since 1979 through the letter, here 1999 through the letter in 2023, is the process that we use, is the process that they endorse and would continue in the foreseeable future. Because they keep coming up with the same answer to us, is the one to follow. So they have never changed the charter and they have never changed their position about the signature line. I think so that's quite clear. But as to whether or not, we would have to go through, and I can go through that process of that based on the statement, the presentation today. Okay, and that's what, under the Supreme Court rules, the presentation today. Even though Mr. Israti presented those extra pages with regards to what he calls an affidavit, again, many of those boxes, those are opinions. We are controlled here by actual rules and evidence. So based on the information, none of those dupes would be valid. Because, again, accepting his argument is something that I think all three of you have just said. Accepting his argument is to change what the charter says. And so you, again, you all said it, that this is not the form for it. The form to do that is at the city of Dayton. So to answer your question, we would go through that, but pursuant to the policies as described in the Dayton Charter and with the duplicates and the letter from, again, repeating the same process and same procedures from the city of Dayton, they are not valid.
Mr. Zrati?
Again, your job is to certify that they have 500 valid signatures. Yet they continuously go past 500 signatures, all the way to 1,250, to 1,279, to 1,238, to 791, to 822, to 918. And those additional signatures may include some of those duplicates. Whereas there is no need to account anything after 500, other than maybe for duplicates. So four or five would be the count. But because you're making this number huge by allowing 1,250 signatures, you are working to not certify, but to decertify later signatures. And the turn-in date is the turn-in date and the signature date is the signature date. And the question of when you turn them in early or late is not the issue. The issue is, did they have 500 valid signatures? And the way to do that is to put all the voters in to a database with their date of signing and which candidate in one, and then another if they have a second. And then the third gets discounted. And you put up a spreadsheet together and you find out who has 500 signatures. But counting the ones past the date or counting to 1,200 is actually turning you into a board of selections instead of a board of elections. And that is not your job. Let the voters select the candidates, please. That's what these affidavits said. Those people said, I signed that not to discount.
Correct.
I'm gonna go back and...
Put something out.
Uh, Mr. Resbeck?
But in response to Mr. Zrati about this, it goes on, it continuously goes on. One, you all gotta change the rules because he didn't follow. That's what I think. But with the petition, with the petition itself, those...
We're done.
Oh, I'm just gonna respond to the number he keeps trying to sort after. There is Directive 2022-17 in Section 13 that specifically says...
We've considered it. My question to you, Mr. Resbeck, is you stated before, I think succinctly, the motion that we should consider, and can you state that again?
The motion that you are, is in front of you, is based on the evidence that was presented today. And all of it from both presentations, of whether or not there is now enough valid signatures to either place Mr. Israti on the ballot for the May 2nd, 22, or continue to have it as he did not present enough evidence to present valid signatures. He is still 16 short and not to be placed on the May 2nd, 2023 ballot.
Okay. Do I have a question?
Can we ask counsel if they agree with... Or may you?
Does the assistant prosecutor choose to weigh in?
What issue, Judge?
I'm not sure.
I would, I would ask counsel if you agree with the process that is taking place today. And do you think that we have enough evidence from both Mr. Israedi and also Director Resbeck about to make a decision, to make a decision? You think we're taking everything into consideration that you think we should be?
Being careful in how I, how I answered the question. Yes, I had, we had the opportunity to consult with the Director about the process that was required both by state law and the EOM. The Board has followed that process to the letter. The Board has given the opportunity and will give the opportunity for both candidates to present whatever evidence they choose before the Board and has given them time. They have done so. Whether or not it constitutes sufficient evidence is sort of a question for the individual candidates, whether or not they have put forward everything that they feel is necessary for the Board to make the decision. They have been given the opportunity to do so and have done so. The Court has received evidence both in the form of verbal testimony as well as documents presented by Mr. Israedi and the Board to know if I'll make a decision based entirely upon what was presented. The one question we would, or the one clarification we might suggest to the Board to make the motion cleaner because the petition for both of the candidates, both of their petitions were deemed not to be valid. Therefore, the Board is reconsidering that decision that they are not valid. It may be simpler to make the motion that did the candidate or candidates meet the burden to place them on the ballot, yes or no? That would make it a simple up or down vote by the Board. Does that answer your question, Mr. Love?
Yes, thank you, Assistant Counsel.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
Place or not place on the ballot, correct? I wanna make sure, I think I'm on the same page, counsel.
You can phrase it however, however you want, but what made sense to me was because the candidates were not certified before, whether the motion would be yes or no, did the candidates meet their burden to place them on the ballot?
In this case, it's on one candidate.
It will be the same motion for both of you.
I believe that's, so Israedi, Ms. Verdi be placed on the ballot.
Sir, six, is that motion?
Can you recede it?
I would move that Mr. Israedi has met his burden to be placed upon the ballot.
Is there a second? Having failed for a second, do I hear another motion? If that, I believe if that fails for a second, then I would take a motion that the burden is not met and see if that gets seconded, so. So if there is no second.
I'm gonna second that.
All those in favor?
I.
All those opposed? May. I guess Mr. Israedi's place on the ballot. Thank you.
Next.
Thank you, Your Honors. I appreciate you taking my day to review our reconsideration here today. Again, I appreciate you taking my time to consider our, to hear our consideration here today. I would like to be reconsidered on several weeks after reviewing my own petitions. There were several disagreements that I found initially based off the conversation that I had when I initially went to the VOE and picked up my petitions. At the VOE, and I have a recording stating that I didn't have prescribed at a later date, and this was notice, was yesterday for me. I did not actually send my letter before being asked to come and present myself, so I wasn't able to properly prepare all of my evidence. But I do have a recording to which the Board of Election Representative told me that I only had four hundred and forty-four votes are valid signatures at that time when I collected. And also positioned that I didn't have an option to try to correct any of the current signatures that I did have in. After coming into the VOE several days later, on the third, fourth, fifteenth, I was told that I could at that point ask for reconsideration. But again, I wasn't aware of this and in that time, I wasn't looking to change new my petition because I was told that I couldn't. After actually reviewing the petition and the the summary statement that they provided me at the same time that they told me I only had four hundred and forty-four petitions, I noticed that here it actually shows that I have four hundred and fifty-nine valid signatures. So that's an additional fifteen signatures that I was told that I didn't have, that I would have to get. And then at that, I then did my own count of the petitions given to me by the Board of Election with their signatures and their company initials. There were unfortunately variances between who initialed when, how much count was, and whether or not there was a count with an initial. So I can't say or speak to who exactly gave all of these, but taking the highest number off of each, I came up with four hundred and sixty-one actual verifiable or valid signatures. So again, that puts me only thirty-nine away. Then doing a little deeper dive that I could, off of the sign, off of the people that I could recognize signatures on, following against, or going against the Board of Elections, Board of Registration base, I was able to determine that there were actually five individuals whose signatures, based off of how they signed their petition, both printing and signing their name and the address they provided, that they should have been counted amongst the ones verified. In my, and I think you guys actually have my names here, bring them all there. But on their voter, on the petition, they were marked not registered at that address, not registered, not registered, the jurisdiction was wrong, the jurisdiction was wrong. I checked all five. They are all in Dayton. They are registered at that address and their signature was on the petitions that they signed. Petition eight, line thirty-seven for Davion Fowler. Petition eight, line thirty-nine for Michael Jackson. He put Mike Jackson in his print, but he signed Michael Jackson. Petition twenty-nine, line eight, Linda Worthy. Petition twenty-one, line twenty-four, Christopher James, who unfortunately there is multiple Christopher James in the records and so that is most likely why they weren't able to locate his initially. I had to go through a few pages myself to find it. And then petition thirty-three, line twenty-two, Kyla Watson, which is an additional five signatures that should have been counted. If we have that down, now we have four hundred and sixty-six signatures. Compared against the thirty-three or thirty-six that I was told, or for non-genuine signers, I should be able to then reconsider it under the fact that there is precedence about when people print instead of signing their signatures. When I collected those signatures and I saw people printing, I asked, is that your signature? And I was verbally replied with a yes, that is my signature. I'm not one to contest a person telling me that that is their signature. And so if they have verbally agreed that that's their signature, they have signed my petition, they are registered in the City of Dayton, but they're still qualified as non-genuine because they don't match what is on the Board of Elections according to according to the EO now, section thirteen oh five, which leads to reference note thirty-six, page three sixty-eight, there's a section three, thirty-five oh one dot oh one one of the ORC. This stipulates that for persons who do not use a cursis out of legal mark during the course of their regular business or in legal affairs, sign or signature means that that person's other legal mark, that the person uses it during the course of their person's regular business and legal affairs is written, is written in their own hand and should be qualified as a valid signature. Going forward at thirteen, under thirteen point oh five of the same section in the EOM, reference note thirty-eight says, if a Board of Elections has conducted a hearing concerning consideration of signatures on the candidate or issued petition, it must not disregard evidence produced at that hearing. If undisputed evidence shows a non-matching signature to be genuine, then the Board must count the signature, even if that does not match the elector's legal mark on the Board of Registration record. Now unfortunately, I didn't have time, as I said, to collect the affidavits to this effect because I was just informed yesterday morning that I would be in this hearing today. But if I could, I could definitely collect the additional affidavits verifying that those were the individuals signing the petition and they were signing in vapor of my ballot, me getting on the ballot. The other part that I want to mention is going even just a broader overview of what is allowed under the Election Official Manual, chapter fourteen point oh four, which was discussed earlier. As a directive for this reconsideration, there is a section that leaves, I'm sorry, going back to section thirteen point oh one, petitions generally within the same EO and on reference note two, leads to Ohio Revised Code, section thirteen, thirty-five oh one point thirty-eight, which are just general rules for petition and declarations of candidacy. Within that, there is M section one and one B, which says whether the petition falls within the scope of county's authority to enact the initiative, including whether the petition conforms to requirements set forth in section three of Article Ten of the Ohio Constitution, including the exercise of all of those powers that are vested in the performance of all duties imposed upon counties and county officers by law, and whether petition satisfied statutory requirements to place the issue on the ballot, climbing the court shall be subject to a challenge. I'm sorry, I read the wrong part. Let me skip down to actually ORC, section three oh seven point nine five, which is referenced in that section I just read, which says, since several of my petitions were determined to be valid, and actually all of my petitions were determined to be valid, that since the number of valid signatures were insufficient, I should be given an opportunity or I may be able to solicit and find additional signatures, additional signatures to the petition pursuant to division E of the section or division of the section or both. So in that case, again, I could add another petition paper, again, I didn't have because of yesterday morning was when I was in that worded, that I would be given this opportunity, the time to collect those. But in doing so, I'm sure I could collect another forty signatures by the end of the day, by the end of four P M. Which would still qualify within that fifteen day timeframe that is given for invalidating a petition to begin with. So I just ask that you reconsider my petition to put myself on the ballot based on all of these amongst other things that I have yet to do. Thank you.
Mr. Resbeck?
Those are my original copies, so that I can.
And Mr. Resbeck, you were.
Yes, thank you. Those petitions.
Those are.
Those are copies.
No, those are.
I have the originals.
Well, yeah, those are my copies of your.
Okay, that's the end of this.
Again, with this presentation, there actually hasn't been no documents presented other than petitions themselves, which have been, we weren't prepared for our recommendation, but whether you guys accept our recommendation, now that's up to you.
And are registered.
Again, unlike the last argument that we continue to, we'll continue to say that pursuant to the Charter of the City of Dayton, there is no indication that you can refile and add a petition that is in the statewide, setting that in the county body petitions you, once you submit a petition and the part petitions, you cannot resubmit or add additional to that, that is for the statewide. But more specifically, again, I will then continue to refer you guys to the City of Dayton Charter. The City of Dayton Charter is the controlling aspect of this. If it goes to speak to one, whether you like it or not, or you think that it's to add a line or not add a line, it is what we have. The City of Dayton has indicated what the process and policy that we should follow. Whether you like it or not, that's the process and policy that we should follow. Again, this individual has presented nothing today. Even the non-genuine signatures, there's no affidavit, so that. Much of the numbers that she's presented to you today indicate that even with trying to do the calculations, we're not even get to the five hundred. She also talked about just briefly on submitting the copies of the petitions themselves. She just randomly chose the highest number in each of the petitions. Well, again, that's why we go through these things and whether or not they are correct or not, and that's what the process is. She does not have enough. She is, I think, at eight, I'm sorry, four fifty-nine, so she's forty-one short. Just like Mr. Israedi was sixteen short. They should not be placed on the ballot.
Would you elect Trish?
I would. In the, since it's a quasi judicial hearing, as you said previously, I should have been given the proper opportunity to actually compile all of this. I should have been given, they'll notice, letting me know that this hearing was gonna happen. So if we are not going off of, or if we're going to pick and choose which rules are followed, I don't believe that I should be penalized because I was brought in today at the very last minute to present myself. If I would have been offered an actual timeframe for my personal own reconsideration hearing, I could have collected the affidavit if it's necessary. And although the City of Dayton Charter does say that you can't amend a petition already filed, I am not looking to amend my petition filed. I am looking under the Reconsideration Act to add additional signatures based upon the ORC, which states that you can if you have been found invalid, but your petitions have been found valid. So again, all my petitions have been found valid, although the signatures are not sufficient. It does not disqualify the petitions themselves. And so in that, I could go back and create an additional petition and not modify the one there. Or again, I could go and collect those non-genuine signatures and I would have the proper time to respond if I cannot today.
Let me, let me respond to that because she was given one to twenty-four hours notice. I personally contacted her. We had this discussion. Yes, twenty-four hours in advance of this.
At nine A M. Would you noddy?
By the time you started your presentation, it was past nine A M. So you have one to twenty-four hours to respond. Additionally, again, you can withdraw your petition up until the moment that the Board acts. Once you file, once the Board has acted, the Board has acted, that petition is invalid. She could no longer than refile a new petition. It is, it was called the soror loser rule. It is there. But again, those are, you know, again, that's in the state law and that's, we're following the Charter. Here's what the Charter says. You guys, you guys are not gonna follow Charter. You guys are gonna cover all of them. That's your choice. But I'm just telling you what the law says with regards, or the Charter says with regards to the petitions themselves. In doing so, her petition remains invalid. Even if you give her all the non-genuine signatures, she's still short because of the deuce. And it's the same issue, and they are not valid petitions and should not be placed on the ballot.
And my question is for clarification. Do you ignore everything else because of the duplicate signatures? Miss Love, do not have enough votes?
That's correct. Well, she has, I mean, if you were to look at the numbers. I mean, she has. She has a hundred and not ninety-five, I mean, she did turn in nine oh four, or nine, yeah, nine oh four. She has a hundred and ninety-five that are valid because of jurisdictions that are not registered, the signs were outside the area. She has a hundred and seventy-seven that are just plain not registered. So this is a quite different set of arguments. She has fifteen that the red address was not registered, meaning they were outside the area. And again, we talk about the thirty-three that are not genuine. There's a couple of those, there's a line out where we don't count them, or they're a black line, a blank line, sorry, on that particular thing. However you add up these numbers with regards to Miss Love's petition itself, you know, going through each of these things as we did in the same process that I previously described, but more importantly, the presentation here. described, but more importantly, the presentation here, there's nothing to change, there's nothing that presented to change the 33. We are under time constraints, which to do this. Miss Love indicated that she was wanting to do the re, she was wanting to check it out and have a request for reconsideration at the day of our meeting on our third. She's had from our third all the way today to get any of the documents that she wanted ready. And she continues to not have that. I'm sorry, March 14th.
14th was the.
Yeah, March 14th. March 3rd, sorry, March 3rd was the turning day. So we get to have time to do that. But also to point out that within the EOM, you know, when you look at these, we do go over them out and check all of the signatures because we are required to because that's in voter-initiated contact and they get credit so they can stand voter rolls. That's why you have to go through all of those signatures. And that's what we did in Miss Love's case. And that's why you continue to go through and follow this. But that, since there has been nothing presented to change at least 33 and nothing else that would warrant that, we can would ask that you vote to have please her on the ballot.
Madam Chair, call to the question.
Okay.
Uh, may I recall?
Uh, the question was called. I think we know your position.
There's actually additional information I'd like to provide.
Call to the question.
We'll, we'll proceed without that. You're done. Okay. Do I have your motion?
The motion for whether or not.
The motion, whether or not Miss Love has met her burden to show that her petitions are valid.
Uh, having reviewed the evidence presented here today, the, it, the number of signatures not being given, given the, any duplicates sent other petitions to, I, I think that Miss Love is not met, reverted to be certified for the election, for the May 2nd, 2022, 2023, on the special election.
Second down. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Those hearings were over. Any comments by the director?
Yeah.
Okay, since this involves the City of Dayton, and I can't sit there and interrupt the case in comments, as our board, I'd like to make some comments. I respectfully disagree with my colleagues. I understand their position rules and I highlight it, and that's fine. We'll proceed that way. However, I would note for the record that the Board of Elections processes elections. It does not make rules for cities. It does not change charters. It does not interpret charters different than has been interpreted by that city without some valid reasons for doing that. I think that we have made a mistake. This has nothing to do with Mr. Israidi, but I think we have made a mistake in basically telling, now, we can tell the City of Dayton to change the charter. We think the number is large. Maybe need to make some things more consistent. But I think basically we're just slapping them in the face and saying, hey, you know, we love what you're doing, so we're going to do what we want to do. We don't think that's the appropriate job of the Board of Elections. I believe my colleagues have made their decisions in good faith. And I stand with them and we will proceed. I'm also afraid that their ruling today will cause a lot of concern and perhaps chaos in how, how petitions are checked. I'm not sure where we are now. I have no idea when we had a process, be it writing or not, a procedure, whether it's writing or not, where the date of the filing of the petition ever knew what that was and what it meant. If you chose to file on the last day of filing, even though you apparently got signatures in January and February, that meant your signatures might be the ones that were considered duplicate. If you filed early enough, then you would know where you stood. So again, I respect my colleagues. I believe they made their decisions in good faith, but I think that is going to be a problem going forward.
All right. So I, I appreciate, I appreciate that. This can be easy. Sometimes they do call on the question sensitive issues. At this point, I agree that it is our job to change charters, to change rules, apply it is our job to hold all of us, including ourselves, accountable. But when a entity acts without accountability, without the prescription clearly of what requirements are, that indeed has to be held accountable. And at this point, it was the city's own actions, such as the reforms that it does. I agree that we are now in a position that we need to determine what the process, policy and procedure is going forward. Clearly put that it's writing and make that, you know, thereby eliminating any ambiguity, any gray areas to any per issue in this. I think we can do that. That is, that is our duty, but we do not have that opportunity. We have been less disappointed to operate with, not unless there's a pen, but the determination of how this goes up as a prompter for City of Dayton. We are concerned with that. I encourage all candidates to, voters to carefully to organize laws because ignorance of the law is no excuse for it, for my goodness. You are accountable to its goals, to common mass, and that is the only fair and ethical way to proceed in this sacred duty of administering elections. I encourage both Mr. Israidi and Miss Love to further submit petitions on other elections as well. I encourage all candidates to do so. And I appreciate the board's positions, board members' positions. I thank each of you for the time, efforts, as well as today and the opportunity to process to, once again, bear good, bear relationship.
Madam Chair, I, you know, I hold you with the utmost greatest respect before you have the other board. And so.
I, I think there is a huge vast difference between the two present, David, presentations I believe today. I also think it is like Member Blaine said, I think it's good kicking the butt for City of Dayton to review their documents and how they're doing things. And I think that some of the stuff that is absurd when they get here, I also think that candidates need to understand how important it is for those individuals that are circulating their petitions and that they need to be questioned. I know when I circulated petitions years ago, you know, one of my questions was make sure that they hadn't signed another petition and just make sure that things like this don't take place. I do, like I said, agree with the bipartisan way that we have judged the signatures and command our staff in order to do that. End of that.
Madam Chair, thank you very much for participating today.
Thank you. Any public comments? Having done none, the next meeting is Monday, May 1st at 8:00 AM. Do you have your motions?
I just.